I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Morganton City Council for November the 13th, November the 3rd, 2025 to order. If you'll please rise, I'll have Councilman Chris Hawkins, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call Reverend Jasper Hemphill from Ecclesia Bible Institute to lead us in an invocation. Jasper, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father God, I thank you for allowing us to come together one more time to do the business of the city and to be led by the power of your precious Holy Spirit that we lean not to our own understanding, but all our getting, get your understanding and that you do all that you're supposed to do and as you're called to do, as we call on you to make sure that we lean not to our own understanding, but all I get and get your understanding. And so we bless each and every one under the sound of my voice as we continue to do the business of your house. This we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Jasper. I'd like to introduce council to my far right, Wendy Cato, Mayor Pro Tem, Chris Jernigan, City Council, Keith Rigsby, our City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, City Manager, Butch McSwain, City Council, Chris Hawkins, City Council. Our City Clerks are Renee Carswell, our interpreters for the deaf community, Danette Stillman Bridges, and Ernest Williams IV. Our first order of business is a service pen. Randy Loop has been with Special Projects Coordinated with Compass for 30 years. Randy was not able to be with us. Under public advocacy, I'd like to call Caroline Avery to the podium, please, for an announcement.
Thank you so much, Mayor Thompson, for allowing me just to make this announcement to the community. And thank you, City Council Members, for your service. And Attorney Rigsby, thank you very much. It's nice to be here. I just wanted to let the community know that we're going to be having a community civics conversation at 5:15 on Monday, November 24th, and it will be at the North Carolina School for Science and Math. Judge Bob Irvin will be there, and he will be leading this conversation. And we are asking citizens who would like to come, everyone's invited, to bring any questions that they might have, and Judge Irvin will answer them as best he can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Caroline. An announcement that tomorrow, November the 4th, is Election Day. We ask if you have not voted, to please vote. I'd like at this time to call Cheryl Grattan, Chairperson of the Community Appearance Advisory Commission, forward to present two awards, please. Cheryl, thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Grattan, and I'm the Chair of the Community Appearance Advisory Commission. I'd like to invite at this time the CAAC members in attendance up. This is Michael Burley that's leading the show here.
Michael's going to give directions. Yes, he does.
So the other commission members are Vice President, Vice Chair James Bagley, Martha Franklin, Judy Lane, Leslie Geezy, Emily Bartlett, David Lee, and Susan Duckworth. We don't have everybody here tonight, but this is representative of our commission. The commission is a mayor-appointed citizen commission that initiates, promotes, and advises City Council on community aesthetics. The CAAC awards are considered annually for properties that have gone above ordinance requirements and are making significant enhancement to the appearance of Morganton. By their example, they're encouraging others to do the same, and that elevates Morganton's appearance to a higher standard of living, which then encourages public and private investment in our community. This year, we have two merit awards recipients. Each recipient will receive a framed certificate to keep and a sign to display until this time next year. And the first one goes to the Enola Group, and that's Dawn Curtin, Linda Wilson, and Nancy Wood. So if you'd come up, if any of you are here. It's for the recent renovations of the Burleson House located at 200 Lenore Street, a locally designated historic structure in the Avery Avenue-Lenore Road National District. The 1891 building and grounds continue to be improved, including chimney brickwork, new roofing, siding, and trim work, painting of the whole house, and a new residential scale sign. Landscaping has also been added as required by zoning. Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
Sure. Yeah, we would just like to say thank you to everyone for their support for the city working with us so closely and helping us understand what we need to do. And I just appreciate it and the labor of the lot.
Nice. Okay, thank you. The second award goes to Trish Keane, Matilda Kissler, and Rocky Wisnigant, and the Reverend John C. Simpson, I also call Father John, for the property at 303 King Street Grace Episcopal Church.
And that's okay, Mom. It's okay.
The award is given in appreciation for this property's contribution to the enhanced appearance to the city of Morganton through ongoing maintenance of the 1845 historic structure in the King Street National Historic District. The property is well-maintained landscape and church structures, including cemetery, labyrinth, iron fencing, and mature shade trees, all of which contribute to a pleasing property curb appeal. Congratulations. Do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I want to thank Rocky, our landscaper, who's been with us, we're guessing between 10 and 12 years, and he's worked really, really hard to keep our property looking good. And then we've had to do some landscaping in front of our parish hall, which I think enhanced it tremendously. And it's just a beautiful campus, and I ask everyone to come and walk it sometime. People really like to do that, especially I. Thank you very much. We appreciate this, and we're so surprised.
Congratulations. He's fine. He's fine.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for all you do for our community. We have a proclamation that I need to read. Proclamation, and I'm going to ask Abby Taylor, she'll come forward, about the Burke County Nonprofit Day. I'd like to read that proclamation. Whereas charitable nonprofit organizations throughout Burke County save taxpayers thousands of dollars through their service and contribute significantly to the high quality of life for all citizens, and whereas these organizations are committed to serving the educational, cultural, civic, health, religious, housing, and animal services, recreational, philanthropic, environmental, and other diverse needs of Burke County, and whereas the staff and volunteers of all Burke County nonprofit organizations are dedicated to upholding the highest standards of community service, donating their time and effort to making a difference in the lives of others, and whereas Tuesday, December 2nd, is the observation of Burke County Nonprofit Day, called One Burke Gives, provides a unique opportunity for the citizens of Burke County to join in appreciation and support of the many contributions made by nonprofit organizations to our contingent well-being while boosting awareness for continued growth. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the city of Morganton, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, as Burke County Nonprofit Day, and encourage all citizens to recognize the positive impact that nonprofit organizations have on the quality of life of the citizens of Burke County. I'll ask Councilman Chris Hawkins if he'll make that proclamation to Ms. Taylor.
As our mayor said, nonprofits save folks lots of money in a wide variety of different areas. And I would like to urge, as the proclamation says, our citizens to, on December the 2nd, to go online and to give and support your favorite nonprofit, and not only on December 2nd, but every day throughout the year. So on behalf of City Council, I'd please present this to you.
Thank you.
Abby, would you like to say something, please?
Sure. My name is Abigail Taylor. I am the Marketing Director at Burke County United Way. And of course, we're very excited to celebrate the sixth annual One Burke Gives Giving Day on December 2nd. It's a 24-hour giving day event, and it's hosted online at oneburkgives.org, and that's the number one burkgives.org. And it's dedicated, of course, like you said, to supporting nonprofits throughout Burke County. Our first Giving Day event was in 2020 as a response to COVID, and that was to provide a convenient and safe way for donors to get to nonprofits and fundraise during the holiday season. And since that year, Burke County municipalities have graciously joined us by proclaiming Giving Day as Burke Nonprofits Day. And it's been incredible to see our community rally around this tradition, which is not only a tradition now in our county, but also worldwide. Giving Tuesday is a worldwide event, always held after the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. So each year, Burke County United Way sponsors the online platform, and we allow any 501(c)(3) to join us and participate totally for free to fundraise and connect with their donors. And this year, we have about 32 nonprofits signed up so far to join. And in the past, we've raised over $100,000 just in one day in our community, which is awesome. So we're hoping to hit that mark or go above it, of course, this year, and especially in the wake of Hurricane Hailene, it's more important than ever to come together and uplift one another and uplift our nonprofits. So just a reminder, number one, burkgives.org, and we look forward to hopefully hosting everyone online that day.
Abby, thanks so much for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call on Mackenzie McGuinness, our Main Street Manager, for some recognition of the MAID competition awards.
Yes, good evening. It is my pleasure tonight to provide an overview and announce the winners of this year's highly successful MAID Morganton Arts Design and Engineering Competition. MAID is produced by Historic Morganton Festival Incorporated and is an award-winning event that represents one of the most successful collaborations between our local education and industry partners. The competition gives middle and high school students a critical opportunity to engage in STEAM-based activities that build skills relevant to this area's industries. This year's event was the Rescue Robot Challenge, a full-day onsite design-build-engineering challenge where teams use problem-solving, engineering, creativity, and teamwork to build robots to compete in a specific task. We saw incredible innovation, critical thinking, and ingenuity from all the participating schools. So to announce the winners, in our middle school division, third place was New Dimensions Charter School, second place was Morganton Day School, and first place was East Burke Middle School. And for our high school division winners, in third place, we had Freedom High School, in second place, we had Patton High School, and first place was Drawn High School. So we congratulate all of the winning teams and their mentors for their dedication and hard work. Their success is a testament to the strong STEAM education being provided across our community. Thank you.
Mackenzie, thanks so much. It was a real interesting day. Okay, under coming events, art in the hall for November. Sturtlin Liski is a local mixed-media artist. She uses pencils and layers of acrylic paint to achieve visual and physical texture in her work. Okay. Breakfast with Santa tickets go on sale beginning November 3rd, 2025. Tickets can be purchased at the UPS Store. Breakfast with Santa will be a ticketed event on Saturday, December 6th and December 13th. Our Holiday Farmers Market is Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at North Green Street. The Winter Carnival and Tree Lighting will be Saturday, November 22nd, from 2:30 to 5:30 at the Courthouse Square. On Saturday, November 22nd, you have visits with Santa from 5:00 to 8:00, and carriage rides from 5:30 to 9:30 on the Courthouse Square. Under Small Business Saturday, Who's Got the Winning Ticket is Saturday, November 29th, from 10:00 to 2:00. Our Downtown Christmas Parade will be Christmas Through the Ages on Thursday, December 2nd, at 6:00. At our Performing Arts Center, Friday, November 21st, at 7:30, Balsam Range will play. On Sunday, November 30th, at 7:30, Dolly Parton's Smoky Mountain Christmas Carol will be held. On Friday, December 12th, at 7:30, Clue, which is A Mansion, a Mystery, and a Murder, at the Performing Arts Center. And on Wednesday, December 17th, at 7:30, the Western Piedmont Symphony will present The Magic of Christmas. Sally, do we have anything on the municipal power agency?
Just to announce that November will be election for the power agency, and we have representatives running from Gastonia and Shelby.
Okay, thank you. Under consent agenda, we have six items. Will you cover those, please?
Yes, we have six individual items. There's actually seven actions, because one is two budget amendments, two actions, asking that you approve those in one motion unless you want something discussed separately. And for those of you viewing at home, we have minutes from the October 6 meeting, and then the recessed and adjourned completion of that meeting that occurred on October the 14th. We have a contract for replacing the backup generator and the transfer switch at Public Safety Headquarters, and that is to power generation and control not to exceed the amount of $120,091.51. We have approval of an agreement to work with DOT for our bridge inspections, and this is something that we do with them every other year. And then a word of a contract for underground electric work, and that is to Carl Greg Electric of Shelby, North Carolina. That's a unit cost not to exceed $275,000. And then a word of contract for repair and seal coating at the parking lots at Shuey and the outdoor parking, outdoor pool parking lot, Collet Street. And then finally, a word of contract to purchase playground equipment for Drexel Heritage. And then a separate contract for the construction and installation playground equipment from Compound Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $61,956.12. And then for the installation, that is Recreation Construction LLC, and that is an amount not to exceed $28,031.
Any members of the council wish to have any items removed? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to accept the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
I need two motions for the contract, one to for the amount of $61,956.12.
Oh, I think they're okay is the consent. I really do.
Great. Under New Business, consideration of adoption for an amendment to Chapter 6, Article C and E, and Chapter 8, Section 8, 6010 of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Morganton. I'll call on Chief Ryan Landers to please give us some insight on all those numbers, please. Chief, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Sally. What you have before you is another amendment to a current city ordinance, and this deals with permitted events and more specifically the amplification of sound at permitted events. So what we've seen, not specifically here in Morganton, but what we've seen across the country and in North Carolina, are individuals and groups that go to permitted events advocating for issues that they're passionate about using amplified sound. So what that does is it disrupts the permitted event for the entire duration that they're there. And if you think about our most populated permitted event, which would be the Morgana Festival, we have thousands of people that come to the historic Morgana Festival. And when you have that many people in one place, not everybody thinks the same, not everybody has the same opinion. So what this has a tendency to do when you use amplified sound is that it creates conflict. It starts with verbal and has a tendency to escalate into physical conflict, and we don't want that here. So we're not trying to get rid of anybody's First Amendment rights to freedom of speech, but what we're doing is trying to limit the manner in which they express their First Amendment rights by not allowing amplified sound.
Our existing ordinance addresses amplified sound and talks about measuring it with a device and decibels and all those things, and that's like just impossible, right?
It's about that, yeah.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve ordinances amending Division 1, Part 6, Chapter 2, Article C and E, and Part 8, Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution adopting amendments to regulate interference with permitted events and the use of amplified sound.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion. Have a second. Thank you, Wendy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of some budget amendments to accept insurance reimbursements for different departments. Sally?
Yes, and I would like to say that none of these budget amendments have anything to do with Hurricane Hailene.
Whoa.
Yes. It is all dealing with property and insurance reimbursements that, for damages and things that have happened, and coming from our insurance company. There are four of these budget amendments. The first one is in the water fund, and it is in the amount of $5,510, and it's for various pieces of equipment that suffered damage. The second one is wastewater, and that is for lightning damage that occurred at the wastewater treatment plant, and we're receiving reimbursement, $1,301. And then general fund, various vehicle damage in there, amount $13,560. And then finally, the electric fund, and that is for various property damages, and that is $10,408. Those total $30,779.
What's the wish of council?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments submitted for the water fund, general fund, wastewater fund, and electric fund in the total amount of $30,779 to recognize receipt of insurance reimbursements for various equipment damage, lightning damage at the wastewater treatment plant, various vehicle damage, and various property damage.
Thank you, Chris. I have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Butch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of an amendment to a contract change for the boardwalk. I'll ask Rob Winkler to come forward and tell us about these changes that need to be done.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So what you have in front of you is a request to update and change the engineering design of this project. We, since we've started this, we've realized in the process that there is an opportunity to replace wood materials with a, basically a molded fiber plastic lumber that can be put in, yes, and you have it, I want you to pass it around to look at it. That's the decking boards. But there's also, this design change is to utilize full-strength lumber for the sub part, the structure support of as well. And, you know, with this design, during our engineering, because of this was FEMA damage and everything, we have a design which includes a build back to existing and then an improved project. So this is part of what we are suggesting to look at for an improved project, to utilize these materials which are, have resiliency, resistance to water, mold, mildews, things like that. So it's got, these type of materials are 50-year warranty. So the structure should be around longer than me.
Rob, are they fireproof?
Fireproof? I would say possibly, maybe some retardant. That's something we need to look into, but it's all recycled plastic materials. So it's, should be more preventative than wood.
Wood, okay. Any question for Rob? What's the wish of council?
I'll make a motion to approve an amendment to the contract, parenthetically, change order number one, option two, with Arriet Engineering P L L C in the amount of $5,747.50 for engineering and design services for the boardwalk connector project, and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute contract and other necessary documents.
Thank you, Butch. I have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Next, a consideration of appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. What's the wish of council?
Motion to reappoint Ruth Roseborough to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term to expire November 8, 2028.
Thank you, Wendy. I have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is appointments to the Morganton Housing Authority. What's the wish of council?
That's yours.
I think that's a mayor.
Okay, the mayor's going to appoint Randy Moore to the Morganton Housing Authority for a term to expire February 1, 2027, and Latrice Lowery to the Morganton Housing Authority Board with a term to expire on February 1, 2030. Okay. Anything else to come before council? I'm going to call on...
30-day notice.
Yeah, 30-day notice for...
Foothills Regional Airport.
Airport Authority. So the City Council Representatives Louis Carswell and Butch McSwain have terms that expire on December 31st, 2025. I'll call on Mayor Pro Tem, Wendy Cato. She'd like to add anything to the meeting.
I was supposed to be the last one.
Okay. I'm calling Butch McSwain.
Are we accepting money?
You goofed us up.
In the six years that I have been on the council here, this is the first goodbye that we've had. And it has been a great six years because of the continuity we have, and look forward to it continuing. But since I'm close enough to shake hands, thank you for all you've done, Chris, and for so much you've helped to me personally, sitting over here beside you.
Okay. I call on Councilman Chris Jernigan. Anything you'd like to add?
I would. Chris, it's been a wonderful experience to serve with you on this commission. And when you were elected some time back, I was very happy to see that. I know the kind of man you are and the values you hold. I knew you'd be good for the city of Morganton. You're the kind of person that always puts the city's interests first. I've never had you talk about your own interest about anything in the six years that I've served with you. It's a sad day for us. We don't want to see you go. And just wish you the very best, and just want to say again, thank you for all the things you've done for the city of Morganton, and will continue to do in, you know, in your daily work and just being a good citizen in the community, we know. But your leadership is just exemplary, and I can't thank you enough on behalf of all the citizens of Morganton for your hard work and your dedication to this city.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Wendy?
Chris, I will miss saying hello every time we get together on Monday, and I will miss our conversations that you and I have had as we have worked through these six years. I asked the girls what they were going to do with you the first Monday of every month, and they said they had to come up with some sitcom that you all could watch. So you've got that to look forward to. I invite you, as a citizen of Morganton, to talk to us, to lend your opinions, to lend your knowledge when we're dealing with items that are important to you and to your family and to the citizens. You will be missed. There will be a new complexion up here. I am just, I am sad because I will miss you, but again, please don't hesitate to call any of us and discuss what you think is a concern in this community.
Thank you, Wendy. If my wife has anything to do with, it'll be a Hallmark movie.
And Chris...
It's a season.
It's a season all year round.
And Chris, I'd like to add, again, on behalf of council, it's just been fantastic to have you. I just, you had an insight that some of us don't have, and we really appreciate all you've done, and we just thank you so much for your service and give you a chance to make any comments right now if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. You all are too kind with your comments. I could say the same and much more back at you. First off, thank you so much for everyone who arranged the reception earlier today and who took time out of their busy schedule to be here. That really meant a lot to me. It is hard to believe it's been eight-plus years since I first ran for the District 3 City Council seat. My wife Lori and I joked at the time and since then that a lot of our date nights were spent grabbing a couple coffees and riding around Morganton to make sure my signs were still up and putting some more out where we felt like we needed them. So, but we had a good time doing that, but that was two or three nights every week. But when I first ran for City Council, I did so wanting to be a part of the process and making Morganton a place where our children and grandchildren could and would want to work and live. And looking back over the last eight years and some of the things that have happened, I think we've done that and continue to do that. And some of the things that I jotted down that have happened, and this is by no means an all-inclusive list, seeing the North Carolina School of Science and Math open its doors, a hotel downtown, which means so much to our businesses, the Courthouse Square Amphitheater, Murphy's Farm Apartments providing much-needed housing, things for our kids to do, the skate park, additional soccer field and bike trails, and the many ribbon-cutting ceremonies that we have had celebrating new businesses opening, which is a mark of a thriving and growing community. All of this was accomplished, and many of these things, when we went through a global pandemic. And not only that, if that wasn't enough, then we had what was called a 500-year flood event with Hurricane Helene. Despite all that, the City of Morgant continued and continues to move forward. I was asked recently by someone what I've enjoyed most about serving on City Council, and to be truthfully honest, I've enjoyed it all. I've seriously enjoyed serving and serving with each person here and serving with each person who works for the city. But if I had to pick one thing, it would be being a small part of the City of Morganton team, and that does include everybody who works for the City of Morganton. And I wanted to mention all those departments tonight, the Compass, the Community House, Development and Design, Electric Services, the executive team, Finance, Human Resources, Information Resources, Main Street, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Public Works and Water Resources. Everyone who keeps Morganton going every day, just being a small part of that team as we've worked together to best serve the citizens of Morganton, I think that's what I've enjoyed the most. In closing, I want to thank some people. I'd like to thank my wife Lori and my two daughters, Gracie and Claire. They've always supported me and encouraged me in whatever I've done, and I can never thank them enough. I'd like to give a special thank you to my good friend Eddie Wall, who's truly family to me and my girls. Eddie served as my campaign manager and treasurer in both elections, and I appreciate that more than he would ever know. Thank you to the citizens of Morganton for your support and encouragement and for trusting me to represent you. Please know that I never took that responsibility lightly. Every decision I made was done prayerfully, thoughtfully, and always trying to do what I thought was best for you, for the city, and for our city employees. It has truly been an honor serving you. Thank you to the City of Morganton staff and employees. You've always made me feel welcome and a part of your individual teams as well. Thank you to the city attorneys we've had. It was good to see Louis tonight and Keith. It was great to be a part of the interview process and bringing you onboard. You've become a key part of our team, so thank you. Enjoyed working with you. And thank you, Sally, for your support, for your wisdom, for your encouragement. I know when I was first elected, I thought I knew a little bit about city government and what was going on in Morganton, but after being elected, I realized there was a whole lot more I did not know. So thank you for your patience with me as I learned, and especially when I may have asked you questions that I probably should have known the answers to. You're always patient and gracious and never made me feel like I was wasting your time, and I really appreciate that.
My pleasure.
And as I've said many times, you were second to none, and we're fortunate to have you as our city manager. You know I mean that. Lastly, I'd like to thank my fellow City Council members. As was mentioned, we've become a close-knit team. We've worked together, the five of us, for six years. I've enjoyed our many discussions as we've tossed around different ideas and always trying to come up with what was best for the city. Occasionally, we maybe didn't have the same idea about it, but we discussed it, and we voted on it, and we moved on, and we respected each other's opinions, and I really appreciate that. I've enjoyed serving with you as a part of that team, and I know you'll continue doing great things for the City of Morganton, and I want you to know I'll miss being up here with you. Thank you.
Chris, thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned.